Welcome to the May 21st, 2019, meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission. This meeting is now called to order. Commissioners Noon and Jenkins will guide us in the invocation and pledge of allegiance to the flag. Please stand.
Please join me in prayer. Our most gracious heavenly Father, again, we come to you with very thankful hearts, thankful Lord, that we live in a nation where we have freedom to worship you and freedom to speak, and we just ask that you be with our governmental bodies, whether it be the national government, or whether it be state, or whether it be this local body. Give us all guidance and give us wisdom as we make decisions, and we ask that you forgive us, in Christ's name. Amen.
Amen.
Please join me in the pledge of the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please be seated. Thank you, Commissioners. I'll entertain a motion for the approval of April 16 minutes.
So moved. Second?
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you. We have one consent agenda this evening, Consent Agenda A. I'll entertain a motion for approval.
Move to approve.
We have a motion. Do we have a second? Any discussion? Hearing none? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Consent Agenda Item A passes. Thank you. About this evening's business of order of business, approval consent agenda, the item that we just approved, the items on the consent agenda are Platts that meet the requirements of the City of Longview subdivision ordinance. These items will be approved with one vote unless any member of the Planning and Zoning Commission, any member of the public, or the applicant would like an item removed from the consent and placed on the regular agenda. I apologize that I got a little ahead of that, but knowing that no one wanted to pull it off the consent agenda, we'll move right along. The regular agenda, the purpose of this meeting is to hear all pertinent testimony of those in support of and in opposition to the applications before the board. Tonight is the first of two public hearings required to approve a change in zoning. The board also considers Platts. The procedure for public hearing items to be followed tonight will be, the public hearing will be opened and testimony will be heard in the following order. First, the applicant, second, the staff, and third, the general public, and that would include those in support and those in opposition of the request. If you're part of a large group with a common interest, we ask that you appoint a spokesperson, rather than have each individual restate the same information, and when addressing the board, we'd ask that you please state your name and address. Try to limit your comments to five minutes. When all sides have spoken, the public hearing on the matter will be closed, and no further public discussion will be entertained. After each public hearing is closed, the board will vote on the request. Zoning requests and the Planning and Zoning Commission's recommendation will go forward to the second public hearing, which will be conducted by the City Council on June 13, Regular agenda item A. Angela, will you please?
Thank you. A public hearing will be held to consider application Z-19-01, filed by Dean Carlson, requesting a rezone from agriculture to multifamily three zoning district for approximately 5.991 acres of abstract 360 Alexandria Jordan survey located on the north side of East Loop 281, north of Page Road.
Thank you. Is the applicant present? Please come to the microphone and give us your name and address, and tell us about your project.
My name is Justin Paris, and I'm here representing Four Corners Development. My address is 21360 Boone Drive, Bullard, Texas, 75757. This project consists of approximately 5.9 acres. It's the project area, or the land area, is represented by that crosshatch that is on the screen. This property is currently going through annexation, and is, did pass through the first public hearing of the annexation process with no issues, and it's scheduled for a second public hearing as well. So that crosshatch section is, right now, up for annexation into the City of Longview. It is going to be a three-story apartment building that's going to consist of 45 units. We'll have the parking infrastructure in front of the building. There will be a private commercial drive that will extend from East Loop 281 going northwest up to the property. Along that private commercial drive will be public utilities, public water. Public water will go the same path of the drive, will cross 281, just like that, and tie into city water. We are having to go through a CCN revision to do so. Gum Springs is the water district that currently serves the property, but they have approved or granted approval to relinquish their rights to the City of Longview to serve the property. So all that's in the works. We are working with Longview to do that. Sewer, we're going to tap in, just south of Page Road, we'll run around, we'll run down the right-of-way of 281 to do that. We'll run out our private drive first, down Loop 281, just north of Page Road, where we'll tie into an existing gravity main. As the owners, we are, we are paying for the infrastructure for our project. So, you know, we're putting in two detention ponds between our impervious infrastructure and the property to the, I guess it'd be to the southeast of ours. That's how our property would drain, but we'll have detention ponds to attenuate that runoff. We have submitted to the City of Longview our construction plans, and they are under review. At this point, I'll just ask if there's any questions. I'd be glad to address them at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Paris. Did you say Paris?
Yes, ma'am, just like the city.
Okay, great. Any questions of Mr. Paris? Hearing none, thank you for your presentation. City?
Thank you. The applicant is requesting to rezone from agriculture to multifamily zoning district. The applicant is proposing to rezone for the construction of a new independent senior living apartments. Currently, the property is, as Mr. Paris stated, situated outside the city limits. We had our first public hearing on this on May 10th, and we'll have our second required, state-required, public hearing on Thursday in front of council, with final adoption on June the 13th. So these are going, these processes are running concurrently. When annexation does occur, property that is annexed, that is annexed is automatically assigned an agricultural designation. So when development occurs, the property does need to be rezoned. Staff does recommend approval of this request. I'd be happy to answer any questions at this time.
Thank you, Angela. Any questions? Thank you. It's now time for the public hearing, and the general public has an opportunity. Does anyone here wish to speak in support of this project?
Hello, I'm Scott Hamilton. So I sold Four Corners, the subject property. My house is kind of right there, adjacent to it. Yeah, right in there. And anyway, you know, it's one of those kinds of things where I think it's a good project. You might think, well, why do you want apartments in front of your house? As far as I see, all the property is, basically, it's got a future commercial use, and so I think that they're kind of making a good lead that way, I guess is a good way of saying that. It'd be a nice property, they're extending utilities and building in road and all those kinds of things, and so I think it extends good commercial-type use to that part of the loop. I think it's just the, kind of the direction that things ought to develop that way. So I'm the only residential neighbor anywhere close to it, and so, anyway, I'm good with it all.
Thank you, Mr. Hamilton. Anyone else want to speak in support? Thank you. Is there anyone that would like to speak in opposition to this project? Seeing none, I have a quick question of Mr. Paris, and you don't have to come forward, but what is the exterior on this building going to consist of?
Right now, right now, it is proposed to be a mixture of Maesterin and Bionside.
Okay. And is the parking covered, or is there any covered parking?
No, ma'am. It's going to be an uncovered parking lot.
Okay.
And the parking requirements do meet C's code. I think it's based off of X amount of spaces per unit.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Paris. Anybody else with questions? Hearing none, the public hearing is closed. We will entertain a motion.
Make a motion to approve.
We have a motion?
Second.
We have a second?
May I ask you to make the motion?
Mr. Noon. Commissioner Noon.
In a second. Thank you.
Any additional questions? If not, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Hearing none, the motion carries. Thank you. Angela, Agenda Item B, please.
Thank you. Public hearing will be held to consider application Z-19-06, filed by DJHLLC, requesting a rezon from agriculture to heavy commercial zoning district for approximately 2.43 acres of abstract 117S Jackson survey tract 87, located at 3903 Garland Road.
Thank you. Any questions? Is the applicant present? Please come to the microphone. Introduce yourself. Tell us a little bit about your project.
Good evening. I'm David Wong. I represent the owner, DHSLLC. I work for Total Engineering Services, so I'm the project architect on that job.
Thank you. Okay.
We're located at 103 Community Boulevard, here in Longview, and like it says on the docket there, it's a 2.4 acre lot that we would like to go from agriculture to heavy commercial. Looks like the surrounding areas are C2 already, so we're just asking for that to be a commercial rezon.
And tell me a little bit about the current business. I know you're expanding, that's the plan, but what do you do in that building?
The current business is an oilfield services industry, and so we're planning on developing a roughly 6,500 square foot truck, private truck wash and parts wash area. So it's a PMB structure, and so it'll be utilized by the oilfield service company that's there.
Thank you. Any questions of the applicant? Thank you, sir. Thank you, Mr. Wong.
Thank you.
Staff?
Thank you. The applicant is requesting a rezon from agriculture to heavy commercial zoning. The property was annexed around 1980. As stated previously, when annexation occurs, property is automatically given an agricultural designation, so when development occurs, the property must be rezoned. Staff does find that the proposed zoning change is consistent with the future lane use map and surrounding uses. Staff recommends approval of this request. I'd be happy to answer any questions at this time.
Has that site next door been cleared?
The site, you mean to the south, the Creosote Superfund Site?
Right.
It's a superfund site, so there's nothing there, and I don't believe anything can be built there by the EPA.
They're still doing the monitoring and the water testing and everything.
But none of that, as far as we know, is over on his property?
That is correct.
So if he goes out there and digs, he's not going to have any surprises?
Can't guarantee that, but I don't think so.
Is he aware of it?
And we have notified the EPA as well.
Good question. Thank you. Any other questions? The public hearing is open, and the general public is asked to come forward if you want to speak in support of this agenda item. Anyone wish to speak in opposition? Seeing none, the public hearing is closed. Chair will entertain a motion.
Move to approve. Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. The motion carries. Thank you. Agenda Item C.
Thank you. Public hearing will be held to consider application PD-19-03, filed by Ryan Guillory, requesting to amend PD-49 to revise the site plan for approximately 3.409 acres of Lot 2, Block 1, Walnut Hill Professional Center, located on the south side of Walnut Hill Drive and east of Fourth Street.
And the applicant will come forward. Thank you.
Thank you. My name is Ryan Guillory. Address is 709 Hollybrook Drive, Suite 5605. The property in question is a undeveloped wooded lot across the street from Longview Regional Hospital, across Fourth Street, and if you're familiar with that area, there's already medical offices lining the north side of that street. There's a medical office directly to the west of this proposed development. We're proposing to develop roughly 10,500 square foot building to house my personal practice, my medical practice. I do ear, nose, and throat. I office with my wife, she does sleep medicine. Within that, we also have a physical therapy service that we offer that will be housed within that. So I guess more or less a single-tenant building with more than enough parking according, or based on code, just because of what we perceive our needs to be. The front of the building will face to the west, so the back of the building will face the east, which is where the residential development is. We'll have all of our staff parking off the back of the building, so we anticipate the least amount of traffic flow back in that area there. We've had a pre-planning meeting with the city, and based on that, we've moved the dumpster location to be as far from residential location as possible, adjacent to the existing dumpster location from the neighbor to the west. The exterior of the building is planned currently to be a combination of a wood or wood-type material, as well as stucco and stone. I'm not sure what else to share at this time.
Any questions of the applicant? Thank you, Dr. Guillory.
Thank you.
Appreciate you. Staff?
Thank you. The applicant is requesting to amend PD-49 to revise the site plan located on Walnut Hill Drive. The original PD, let me see if we can pull that, I don't know if it's... Okay, it might be part of your packet. The original PD actually spanned across both lots 1 and 2, and was intended for medical offices. The original site plan showed three office buildings, total, three buildings total across both lots, with one on the corner and two on Lot 2, which is Dr. Guillory's lot right here. All three buildings were intended to be 20,000 square feet each, with the one building on the corner was supposed to be one-to-two story, and then the two on Dr. Guillory's lot would have been one-story. The site had originally proposed 275 parking spaces, and only building one was ever constructed of this original plan development. So with this new site plan, going back to this new site plan, he is proposing a one-story building, like you said, approximately 10,500 square feet in size. The use will remain the same, it will be medical offices. The building will have a minimum setback of 20 feet in the front, 10 on the rear, and 10 on the sides. The applicant is proposing approximately 85 parking spaces, which exceeds our minimum. The site plan does show a 10-foot buffer along the east property line adjacent to the residential. Within the buffer area, there will be an existing, there is an existing six-foot solid fence. However, if the adjacent neighbors were to remove that fence, Mr. Dr. Guillory would be, would have to install a new fence. The owner is also proposing to add some canopy trees along the buffer area, as well as some shrubs. The development will have two driveways off of Walnut Hill Drive. Any signage for this development will comply with office zoning requirements, and through the development process, the developer will meet all City of Longview codes. This portion of Walnut Hill Drive is maintained by the City of Longview and is a local roadway. Staff finds that this proposed zoning change is consistent with our future lane use map and surrounding uses. Staff does recommend approval of this request. I would be happy to answer any questions at this time.
Any questions? Thank you, Angela. This is the portion now for the general public. Is there anyone here that would like to speak in support of? Won't you come to the microphone, sir, and give us your name and address?
I may have raised my hand prematurely. I'm Dr. Robert Shelton.
Yes, sir.
I came to make a comment.
Okay.
But I will speak in approval. I welcome Dr. Guillory to this area. I practice with him as in, I'm a general dentist, I use his services. My office is at 905 Walnut Hill Drive. If you put that sheet up, I saw my name, and so I've been there since 1993. We were there when the Yow Group built there to the west. My only concerns are about construction. So is this an appropriate time to do it?
Sure. Go right ahead.
So I welcome the building of that, it's just been a matter of time. Either they were going to fall down, be blowed down, or they're going to be sold off for lumber. There's a lot of nice trees there. My concern is this, tree removal, log hauling trucks. 905 Walnut Hill, or Walnut Hill Drive was built in either the 82, maybe, because when I built there in the spring of 83, it was already down. It was a dead end, right about Dr. Elder's office, where Matt Hipke is right now, that was a dead end. It was a sufficiently wide drive that we parked on both sides of the street, because that's just the way kind of things park. When the Yow built, they opened up that entrance to allow exit. My understanding was, is that originally that street, Walnut Hill, was too close to the access, the main access or entrance into the Yow Group, and that this place, that coming through there as a secondary exit was not legal to be. But the city adjusted their law and allowed that to be a secondary entrance, which then put more traffic on Walnut Hill Drive than it was ever intended to handle, because originally it was a dead-end zone. Now we have that whole subgroup coming out that way. The addition of Dr. Guillory's patients is not going to overwhelm us, you know, that's normal influx and outgrowth. It's the construction that I'm worried about. So I brought some thoughts just to put down and say, take these into consideration. When you cut down the trees, you got to haul them out. How are you going to back the truck in or out? Because I don't know if they can go out through the Yow Group. So you're going to have to have a place to turn them around so they didn't come back out Walnut Hill Drive. Now, that's a bad little intersection. Comes over the top of the hill, we got people, elderly patients come in there, say sometimes don't see well. We've had a number of accidents right there on that corner where Dr. Beck, or the dermatologist is, the 901 lot. So I am concerned about construction and hauling stuff in and out, you know, dozers and land clears, and you got to have a place to turn it around, and I don't know that you can do that in the Yow Group building area. I'm concerned about bringing in construction materials, lumber, bricks, and steel. I remember when the Yow Group was doing, they, a brick truck came in, he got about to the edge of the, that main line where Dr. Hipke's office is, and then there's traffic on both sides parked, he has to back all the way back, back out into Fourth Street, and then figure out how he's going to get back in there. So I'm just asking that there's some consideration, it's like, where are you going to put all the vehicles to turn around? Now, seeing where his parking lot is, oh, that, maybe he's going to clear that out, and he'll have a place to put all that stuff. The other part that would be of concern, comes some concern, would be when the Yow Group built in, we lost the north side of Walnut Hill Drive as far as the parking. The city decided that we could no longer park there. Whereas prior to the building of the Yow Group and making that a secondary entrance, we did fine. In fact, you could park on both sides and drive a fire truck up and down the middle, because they did that until the, you know, fire truck would come in to do our inspections. So I know it was accessible, but all of a sudden, we lost the north side. So I'm a little concerned for the other people, they're not here to express themselves, about those staff members that park on the south side of that road, will they also lose their privilege to park there? Now, construction is going to last three, six, nine, I don't know, given the weather, it might take a year. But some point in time, you just need to be concerned about how we're going to get trucks in and how they're going to get out. So that would be addressed to the builder, but that was what I wanted to comment on. All right, I said my piece.
Thank you, Dr. Shelton. Appreciate your coming forward. Anyone else would like to speak in support? Please come forward. That's all right. Come ahead.
I'm Matt Hipke, and my office is 911 Walnut Hill Drive, and I will definitely support Dr. Shelton's comments just now, that there is one-sided parking on Walnut Hill Drive, and with no parking on the side of my office, and construction starting to be started there, that I'm concerned about access of my patients to my office, and I'm also concerned that they're going to use my driveway as their turnaround point, which, which I definitely want to make off limits. And if you drive onward into Mr. Yow's addition there, the ability for big trucks to turn around is absolutely impossible. And so I would like to agree with Dr. Shelton's thought that I'd welcome Dr. Guillory to our neighborhood, and from that standpoint, I think he's going to make a great neighbor, and so is wife in physical therapy services. I just want to make sure that access to my office and parking by all the construction vehicles and that sort of thing is not impeded. And as long as they, they make room for that, then I definitely would welcome him to the neighborhood.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Hipke. Anyone else like to speak? Hearing none, I'm going to ask the staff to respond, or the applicant, who responds at this point?
I can respond. Walnut Hill is a publicly maintained roadway by the City of Longview typically with commercial development. On-street parking is typically not allowed. Now, we can make, you know, I know the builder is here, and he can maybe talk about this as far as making sure that none of his construction workers are parking in Dr. Hipke's and Dr. Shelton's parking lots and turning around in their parking, in their parking lot, and as far as there should be construction entrances, construction entrances on-site during construction, and they will be able to turn around on-site at his, on his property. Yes.
Any comments, questions from the Commissioners?
Angela, can the site go through over into the Yow Development?
To the east and come out on Hollybrook?
Yes.
Yeah, but we would prefer that than not, but yes, it could.
Yeah, because that road's already had a lot of brick on it and things like that, but instead of backing the truck out like Dr. Shelton was talking about, that could be a hazard still on that.
Yeah, or they can turn around on-site when they put their construction entrances in.
Don't we already have something in sight that they could, that we already have some of their preliminary parking lot pre-finished before they start the construction of the building? In that part, I see that, maybe that's just, I see that more and more, they're putting the parking lot in first, some, and that gives them a site parking, site storage already, that's not a requirement by our city, but I do see more and more construction.
Yes, it is, our fire department.
The fire access.
So you're already going to have, that's going to leave some of that issue.
Yes, sir.
I think it'll just take some general enforcement, because that street's already crowded as it is. Go try to, go try to drive down it any day to go see any of those fine gentlemen and ladies. So there is some concern, I agree.
Yes, sir.
But they're going to be able to park there, so it's already going to be set up.
Any other comments, questions?
I've got something to say. My name's Gerald, I'm the general contractor on this project, and it will be a phased project, just as anything is, that when we're clearing the trees, obviously, we can't have our construction entrance there. But once that happens, then everything will take place on-site. We won't be backing out, we'll be turning around on-site. It's going to be a safe site, because it's three and a half acres.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Okay, the public hearing- Okay, the public hearing is now closed. We'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion to accept as read.
Second.
We have a motion and a second? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. The motion carries. Thank you. Staff update.
Thank you. All items that were presented before City Council last, earlier this month, was approved. And then our second public hearing for annexation, like I said before, will be heard on Thursday.
Thank you. It's citizen comment time. If anyone has any additional comments they'd like to make before the commissioners, this is the time to do it. Hearing none, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you for coming.